That her development as a speaker only blossomed after she began participating in class discussion. My own trajectory at New College, too, mirrored this notion. Had I never taken an ISP with Vera Vargas, I don't think I would have reached the academic confidence to start participating in the first place. Seeing how he created the classroom conditions in which everyone would be able to speak, to openly debate, and learn from the students himself, inspired me every semester afterwards. I believe denying him tenure would be a mistake for a campus with an actively understaffed music department and an expanding body of Latin American students. Thank you.
Carol Lerner, followed by Karen Stock, and then Peter Shellhorn.
Carol Lerner, Sarasota resident. Dr. Vera Vargas, Dr. V for short, was lauded by outside reviewers for his, quote, "original, coherent, and meaningful research agenda." They also said that his scholarship is consistently, quote, "solid, rigorous, nuanced, accessible, and appealing," and that his forthcoming co-authored volume will be a major contribution to the field of Puerto Rican, Caribbean, and popular music history. Clearly, Dr. V's scholarship enhances New College's reputation. It is confusing to read that Dr. Corcoran believes the number of students in Dr. V's course is a reason to deny him tenure. Dr. V sometimes has a few more and sometimes a few less than seven students. This seems spot on for the much-publicized 7:1 student-faculty ratio. Additionally, he has supported many students through ISPs, sometimes sponsoring 10 in a single year. Dr. V is a strong asset for the school and should not be denied tenure.
A well-designed campus master plan provides a comprehensive look at what the college is up to today and what it takes to plan for its best future. We all want its best future, but we need to stay on track with the plan. Plans start by asking questions, collecting data. What has changed since the last update? What goals and objectives have been reached? What has or hasn't worked? And building on that data, the college proposes plan amendments. Then, an informal public information session must be held. In our case, we were not invited to that session. And then, the first public hearing was held where a draft master plan was first shared with us. The college must advertise in local papers to allow public comment, and then the draft master plan is shared with the 30 or so entities. As far as we know, it has not been shared yet. At some point, as soon as those are shared, the 90-day clock begins. But we were also told that January 22nd at our meeting was when the master plan clock was going to be starting.
I would ask you all to respectfully follow the state code so that we have an opportunity to participate fully in what could be very detrimental to our neighborhood.
Next up, we have Peter Shellhorn, then Judy Burns, and then Betsy Braden.
The consent agenda states that the new master plan has been developed and all campus communities have been engaged. The NCF website indicates that the third and final meeting for the master plan will take place in May, at a date to be determined. This timeline would indicate that the formal announcement has been posted and that the 30 or so entities have had time to weigh in. To my knowledge, that has not happened. On the other hand, President Corcoran has recently shared a complete revamp of the plans, including the relocation of the Freedom Institute and the student dorms, and reimagining the fate of the Uplands Preserve. Some of these new developments are welcome, a welcome accommodation to the neighborhood, but if implemented, will start a new clock running for the planning process. My question is, where do we really stand in the planning process? Oh, I didn't give my name. I'm Peter Shellhorn.
Hello, I'm a resident of the Uplands and a New College alum, commenting on the master plan. The Uplands Preserve was gifted to New College in 1960 with the intention that it be kept as a natural bayfront preserve. We have discovered that the Uplands Preserve is now being considered for a 100,000-square-foot conference center or dorms, either one of which will destroy this preserve and require a road through our neighborhood. President Corcoran, you have spoken about openness and transparency, and we have asked to be involved numerous times. I have five requests. One, the names of the master plan committee members. Two, minutes of past meetings. Three, the schedule of future meetings. Four, the current draft of the master plan as it looks today. And finally, to appoint a representative from the Uplands to sit on the master planning committee. President Corcoran, could you or someone on this board please address at this meeting when we might receive these items? The Uplands--
Next up, we have Betsy Braden, Frank Alcock, and Rodrigo Diaz.
Please award Dr. Vera Vargas tenure. Dr. V is a performer, musician, and scholar. This sets him apart from non-performing scholars. Music students need to engage directly with practitioners for historical and ethnographic context, interpretation, and practical details. Dr. V crafts this instruction seamlessly because he honors both craft and pedagogy. He has made teaching art and art in itself. Additionally, he created an impressive educational website that his reviewers called "a truly fantastic resource for scholars and educators." He is a common result on Google when searching for Puerto Rican music topics. Dr. V has mentored undergraduate students to produce published pieces, something unusual in the humanities and an example of what makes New College a magnet for strong, successful students. This high-impact instructional practice demonstrates commitment to a hallmark--
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Frank Alcock. I'm a professor of political science and environmental studies here at New College. I've been asked by a former colleague, Dr. Miriam Wallace, to read a statement regarding the tenure case of Dr. Hugo Vera Vargas. Dr. Wallace was the Chair of Humanities Division here at New College from 2016 to 2022 and is now Dean of the College of Liberal Arts and Social Sciences at the University of Illinois Springfield. She's also served as an external reviewer on a number of tenure cases in the United States and Canada. Dr. Vargas brings an enriching profile to the college that impacts students well beyond the classroom. He is importantly both a scholar of the history of musical traditions and a performer. Denying Dr. Vargas would send a chilling message to scholar artists. From my perspective, opportunities to participate in performing music have an important retention impact for non-majors. Music, like team sports, is an ensemble effort. It brings capacity, reinforces discipline, and develops collaborative skills that are essential to top-notch liberal arts education. I urge the trustees to recognize this, to recognize the history and structure of music. [inaudible]
I will read a statement in support of the tenure application of Professor Hugo Vera Vargas. Professor Hugo Vera Vargas is an outstanding professor, and I give him my utmost recommendation. He is extremely kind, supportive of his students, and knowledgeable in his field. His course, Popular Music and Societies of the Hispanic Caribbean, was among my favorites at New College, and I learned a great deal from discussions in his class. The statement I have just read was written by Galen Ridsick, a New College graduate who studied under Professor Hugo Vera Vargas. Thank you. Que vivas siempre el gran pueblo y la música de la isla de Borinquén. Gracias.
That concludes our public commenters.
Okay, thank you, those who came here to give your comments today. At this point, we're going to move into the consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Trustee Karp. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Spalding. Any discussion? Trustee Keenan.
I'd like to pull off two items from the consent agenda.
Okay, what would you like to pull off?
The approval of the minutes from our last meeting and the approval of tenure for Dr. Vera Vargas.
Okay. The approval of recommendation for denial of tenure for Dr. Vargas. Okay. All right, with those two items pulled off, do we have--
Chair Jengs, we received an email earlier today indicating that one of the items on the action agenda had been removed. I'd like to confirm that.
Yes. You have the current agenda in front of you?
No, I don't. Actually, what was distributed today didn't have--
The item six that's on your agenda was pulled off of consent.
I believe the president's compensation was supposed to be pulled off the consent agenda.
That has been pulled off of consent.
That's six.
It's not on the copy I have in front of me, so I just want to confirm.
Yes, it's confirmed. They handed out new, updated agendas.
Madam Chair, I think what they put in front of us may have been the old agenda.
Okay.
It appears to be.
Okay, yes, that's been pulled off. So can we have a vote on the remaining items on the consent agenda? Thank you. Do we need to do voice vote or just voice vote? Can I have a voice vote, please? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed, like sign? No opposed? Okay, those items on the consent agenda passed. We'll move then into regular business.
Take up the items that have been polled, starting with the minutes.
Yes, we're going to take up the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the February 22nd, 2024 Board of Trustees meeting?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Karp. Any discussion?
Yep. I'd just like to make an amendment to request that the language of the amendment with the student government regulation be included in the minutes. It's just the language from the handout I had last meeting.
All right, and where, tell me where that, what you want to change.
We can put it in there, Chair. I think everyone knows what Trustee Keenan's asking for, and we can put that in there.
I'll second the amendment.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? No, okay.
Back on the minutes as amended.
All right, so we're back on the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay. So those minutes will be republished? All right. Then, the next item pulled off of the consent agenda is the approval of the recommendation for denial of tenure for Dr. Hugo Vera Vargas. Do I have motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Spalding. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Bauerlein, okay. Do we have discussion on this item? Yes, Trustee Keenan.
So I wanted to reiterate my comments from the committee because I think it's important to do so. So in the Academic Affairs Committee, I clarified that the only point in which this tenure case was denied was at the president's level, but all other levels it was approved. And then, we also clarified that the only reason for the denial of tenure was the quantitative data, the average number of students he had taught in his classes. And my comment regarding that was that it does not make sense to me that the only reason we would deny tenure is low class sizes, when that's something we specifically market and something we specifically encourage our faculty to do. And so my question was, what is the minimum number of average students required for a faculty member to have to receive tenure?
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, President.
I just want to be clear that the discussion over the class size, the focus of it at the Academic Affairs Committee, was solely because it was the only thing that was defended by Dr. Vera Vargas in his, of these objective metrics. He did a lengthy discussion of the qualitative metrics, which I didn't get into because if you don't have the quantitative metrics, I didn't have to go there. On the quantitative metrics, if you look at the New College Faculty Handbook, it's first, it's a top priority, is teaching over other tenure criteria. Well, okay. Second, is the tenure guidelines say that unless a determination is made that a candidate is an effective teacher, tenure won't be granted. And then, third, to look at a candidate's effectiveness in teaching, the Faculty Handbook says that we must look at both the quantitative and the qualitative. The quantitative data in the Faculty Handbook that's listed is the number of students enrolled in regular courses, tutorials, ISPs, sponsorship of student contracts, thesis sponsorship, service on baccalaureate committees. If you read my memorandum, I addressed, I did not make, believe he made qualified for tenure based on all of those metrics. The reason there was a heavy focus of discussion on class size was because that was the only part he defended in his defense. And his defense was, in essence, that it was due to COVID. But people in the same division during the same time did not have that issue.
Okay. So, but my concern still remains the same because I'm unclear, what was the bar that he was supposed to meet that was not met? Because if this is, if there's no concerns, all right, let me go back. The, what I'm concerned at is, how are we going to judge faculty to faculty if there's not some bar that's supposed to be met? Because it's going to change based of whatever faculty that we come into the tenure process. So is there some sort of bar that he did not meet?
Yes, in my opinion, which I've outlined, and I stuck to the subjective because I thought if I got into the objective, which I didn't even, subjective, which I didn't even have to, the criticism would have been lengthy, as they are, even though I'm sticking to the objective criteria. In the objective criteria, if you look on, in my memorandum, in the second to last paragraph on page two, I give all of that data. So now, there's a bar. I'm setting a bar, that if you are in the bottom 5% of students, I don't think that warrants tenure. If you're only doing 5.8 contract, only sponsored 29 contracts, 5.8 a year, nine tutorials, 1.8 a year, three theses, 0.6 per year, and served on 15 baccalaureate committees of an average of three per year, I've set the bar. I don't think that warrants tenure.
Okay, well--
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Spalding.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, but my understanding is this body is the only body that can grant tenure, not President Corcoran, not anybody else for that matter.
That is correct.
I'd just like to point out that we just granted tenure to six people under the consent agenda without virtually any notice, including two that were advocated for today. The vote here is a recommendation of the president not to do something. We had a lengthy discussion of this in committee. The fact of the matter is, we as the authoritative board, as the power to grant tenure, have authorized and hired someone to precisely make sure the process goes so that they come to us in a condition where we can take an authoritative vote. He has not recommended tenure for this individual. That strikes me as the only question here. And if there are other people that weren't at that committee meeting that would like to ask questions, I think that's, I'd like to hear if they do. But we had a, it's not the job of the full Board of Trustees to go down the weeds in every case. We have a person here, the president of the college, who has made recommendations to us. And that seems to me, that's the vote, and I think we should stick with that.
Hang on. So nine of the trustees were on the committee that considered these issues. The four that were not members of that committee were Trustee Cristaldi, Trustee Karp, Trustee Mackey, or Trustee Patterson, and I'll go in that order if anybody has any questions.
No additional questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Cristaldi. Trustee Mackey?
No additional questions. My questions have already been answered.
Thank you, Trustee Karp.
No questions.
Thank you. Trustee Patterson, do you have any questions?
No additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll recognize Trustee Reed, who has her hand raised.
So I want to encourage all of my fellow trustees to think very carefully about what's at stake here and to consider the full body of information. This is more than just an up or down vote on a recommendation that came at the tail end of a lengthy process. This is about our fiduciary responsibility, our responsibility to the faculty as a whole, our responsibility to the specific faculty member, to our students, and to the processes that govern our university, right? I do want to note, yesterday, I had a lengthy conversation with Vice Provost Thiessen because I had some concerns about the data that was used. I had reached out about seeing the data. And as a matter of fact, we found that there were a couple of mistakes in the data that was used to calculate the numbers that you were given for Dr. Hugo Vera Vargas's classes, for his class size, specifically, courses.
Madam Chair, if I may, just so we're clear, the rules in the handbook and the CBA require that the only information that this board consider, and it may be that--
Yes, it is.
I just want to make sure we're not going to start getting into--
Yes, exactly. Let Council finish.
So that's what is before the board to discuss.
Yep, exactly. Last week, after our, well, actually, before our board meeting, our committee meeting last week, I had gone carefully through Dr. Vera Vargas's FAR forms, which are the forms that faculty fill out every year, that list the numbers of activities we sponsor with students, students enrollment in classes, tutorials, ISPs, and contracts. Because the data that I had did not line up with the numbers that we saw in the letter from President Corcoran, I sought out expert advice to confirm that the numbers that I had found were correct. Specifically, Professor Vera Vargas sponsored in the period under consideration, which counts four ISP periods, 33 ISPs. That's above average in the number of January projects that a faculty member would normally sponsor. So that's over eight, okay? And actually, in the first year, where he sponsored three, that's a year where faculty are discouraged from sponsoring too many ISPs. So that just amplifies the fact that Professor Vera Vargas has been a very good citizen and has sought out opportunities to sponsor ISPs because he knows he has a responsibility to fill student need and interests. I also note that in the numbers that were carefully counted, two classes of Professor Vera Vargas's were excluded. Mod classes that he co-taught with another faculty member in music were not counted in the numbers. So that according to Vice President Thiessen, or Vice Provost Thiessen, if you actually calculate out the numbers in the classes that Professor Vera Vargas taught and the tutorials and ISPs he sponsored, in most metrics, he is in the second quartile. So it's, or actually, the third quartile. The third quartile. And that's a much different metric than what we were given. And I'm sorry that it's difficult to assess all the numbers at New College. We have tutorials, we have classes, we have ISPs. The information can be put in very, in various ways. And I recognize that for the members of the Board of Trustees, it can be difficult to go through all that material and come up with the numbers. But because I'm a faculty member, and I've been filling out those forms for almost 30 years, I knew where to look, and so I took the time to do it. And I share this information with you because I do believe, I don't, I do believe that we need to consider the information that was available to us, okay? And I had asked that we receive information about how all this information was put together, how faculty are given information to evaluate tenure candidates in the third year, second year, third year, fourth year, and then at tenure in the fifth or sixth year, so that you know that we as a faculty have gone through all this data and looked very carefully at the numbers. That is what we do. I don't believe that numbers raw are the most important thing to consider. I do think that qualitative information is more important, but the numbers here that we got were unfortunately mistaken, okay? And I understand how that kind of oversight can happen. In terms of qualitative information, I want to note two different things. And again, this is also information that was available in the documents. First off, Professor Vera Vargas has helped several students earn publications. If you read through all the other files, you'll note that several of our faculty in the natural sciences regularly work with undergraduate students and co-author papers or posters with them. And that practice is appropriately identified as a high-impact practice that increases retention, increases student success, both here at New College and their persistence in their career goals afterwards. That is something that is not so common in the humanities, and so the fact that Professor Vera Vargas led several students towards publication in the journal Cruzes, which is published by the University Anna Mendez from Puerto Rico, that is very significant. That is something that makes him stand out above and beyond what is expected for a faculty member in the humanities or social sciences. He is engaging in a time-intensive and high-impact activity, mentoring our students, giving them success, helping them on their career paths. That needs to be recognized. And again, I note that this information, we received so much information for this meeting. It's overwhelming. I can't imagine how overwhelming it is for all of the trustees who are not here. I've been reading this information. I've read Hugo's file for the past two years, and I've read those of my other colleagues repeatedly, both as a member of the PAC myself and just as a faculty member who needs to vote on these matters. There's a lot of material to sort through, and I recognize that it is very difficult for everybody to find all the details. And so I am trying to help translate that, as it were, to bring forward what really matters about this file. There were problems with the numbers. His numbers are higher, closer in line with averages than you might think, and the quality of his teaching is exceptionally high. And he also brings wonderful performances to our campus. With his drumming tutorial, ISPs, he has given students not only instruction in the traditions of Afro-Cuban drumming, but he has given our students opportunities to perform, and that is something that really matters. Again, it's about giving students confidence, helping them expand their, well, expand their competence and their range of experiences, and this matters. He does everything we expect an excellent mentor to do, and his scholarship is also top-notch. His book, he has an edited volume, it's actually a series of several volumes, he's the primary editor for one of the volumes in a series on Puerto Rican popular music, is under contract with Routledge, which is an important academic publisher in the US. He has also received a very prestigious NEH grant to help support the website that he created that is a resource for people nationally, in the state of Florida, nationally and internationally for those people who are interested in Puerto Rican music. He has put New College on the map in a field that we did not previously teach. I strongly urge all of my colleagues to give full consideration to the strengths of Dr. Vera Vargas's file and to overturn the recommendation of our president and to award him the tenure he so amply deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Reed.
If I may address some of the issues laid out, I want four quick-- Madam Chair, we're in discussion. We've got to step up the decorum around here with all due respect, Mr. President, and I know you have a response, but we've had debate, and there's a motion and a second, and if there's any other debate, then we'll call the question. I think, I do think I should respond to Trustee Reed. It's the chair's prerogative.
Okay.
The, and I'll be brief. One is, excellent presentation, Trustee Reed. The latter half of your presentation was on qualitative, the subjective criteria of Dr. Vera Vargas. My point is, what's before you and what my memo outlines is if you don't get past the quantitative, that's not even, let me finish, that's not even in discussion. So I'm not, I'm just not even going to address any of that because it goes back to those quantitative metrics. And that's what you, if you believe in the recommendation, then that's what you'd base it on. And I just want to say three other points. One is, I did address in the memorandum the other courses co-taught and footnoted it very clearly in the memorandum. Second, and so it is, and it moved from 6.1 to 6.9. That did not change my opinion, if you count the co-taught classes. In the ISPs, I didn't include it because they weren't that bad, but one of his ISPs, I think, was seven individual students, counting for seven ISPs. Even with that being the case, I count, I left it off. And the third component about the data that you're discussing, that you talked with the provost, is inclusive of adjunct faculty, who some of them only teach a course. It is true. I've looked at the data. And if you counted, you take those out, he's in the bottom third. I stand by the memorandum, and I do believe he, we are going to be the most preeminent liberal arts school in this country. I have no doubts we're going to get there. This is such a low bar. If we, if you deny the recommendation, we will never get there.
Thank you, Trustee Cristaldi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I already said I didn't have any other questions, but if I might, I had to say to one point of clarification, one question. First one is for Mr. Galvano, our counsel. There's been some conflation--
There's been some conflation in the discussion as to when we talk about recommendation, what we're voting on today. I just want to make sure I understand correctly. We are voting on a recommendation of the committee who took into consideration the recommendation of the president. We're not voting today on the recommendation of the president. Is that correct?
You are voting to approve or disapprove the recommendation of the president and his recommendation is denial of tenure.
Sir, let me ask it in a different way. Is this coming to us today as a recommendation from the committee? Or did the committee take action on it?
It is.
It is. Okay. Thank you. That was my first question. Second, and forgive me for not knowing this, and I'm not sure who the best person to ask is, if the denial is approved today, is Professor Vera Vargas eligible to reapply for tenure in the future?
No.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I know the answer, and no, he's not.
Okay. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussions? Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. And so, we're going to take a roll call vote, I mean, a voice vote, all in favor of approving the recommendation for denial of tenure for Dr. Hugo Vera Vargas. Say aye.
Aye.
I would like to request that we actually have a voice vote, like a roll call vote, not just.
Sure. We can do a roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Bowerline.
Aye.
Trustee Karp.
Aye.
Trustee Keenan.
No.
Trustee Kessler.
Yes.
Trustee Mackey.
Yes.
Trustee Patterson.
Aye.
Trustee Reed.
No.
Trustee Ruffo.
Aye.
Trustee Spalding.
Yes.
Chair Jinks.
I'm sorry. Chair Jinks.
Aye.
Trustee, or, Trustee Cristaldi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So, the approval of recommendation for denial of tenure for Dr. Hugo Vera Vargas passes. Thank you. All right, at this point, we're going to move on to the, updated agenda was passed out. It was emailed out yesterday, but you have the current version in front of you. And we're on item five, which is the president's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try to be brief. The, again, I always present basically our three big objectives are to grow students, grow revenues and grow prestige. On the grow students, we're about 190% up over last year, which is fantastic. And on those metrics, today, I think we're up 30 points on the SAT, we're up one point on the ACT, and we're up .04 on the GPA. So, we're going to be up and we're going to, I think, be very close, if not, at this point, it's looking quite readily apparent that we're, we'll beat last year's enrollment record. So, on that front, I think is a, is a great report. I thank the entire admissions staff and everyone working on that. Second, I want to talk about, we had some folks that talked about the master plan. So, the new master, the latest version of the master plan, after the last public hearing, will come out. And that starts the 90-day clock. The 90-day clock has not started at all. So, we're probably looking now, probably into August. But the, and we've, basically, what we've done, seeing the last public hearing and now is look at all that public input, look at all of that testimony, and trying to incorporate a lot of that public testimony. Some of the folks, in fact, almost everyone that testified, I've met with at least once, some of them three, four, or five times, including phone calls, to go over and get their input. And it's been very constructive. And so, hopefully, in the next week or so, we'll have another version of the master plan. That version will start the 90-day clock and give us 90 days for additional input, publications, all of that. Obviously, we'll follow to the letter of, the absolute letter of the law, follow the process perfectly and are to date. So, that was the quick update on the master plan. The mission, hopefully, in the June meeting, we'll have a, and I've shared with everybody all of the comments that we got initial feedback on. We have a meeting set at 12:30 on the 23rd with everyone invited. I think the faculty and the students are going to make suggestions of a, of a plan and then we'll take down the public input, much like we do with the master plan process, and hopefully have something before you, well before that June meeting, for you guys to, to give us your thoughts. The graduation speaker, we're very, very honored to have Joe Ricketts be our graduation speaker. Obviously, I think you've very well aware of his resume. He's one of the, you know, true successful Americans in the modern era. As you know, his family, which he's probably most noted for, but not really that big of a deal to him in a sense, is the Chicago Cubs and, and the ownership of the Chicago Cubs. What he cares more about and has devoted a lot of his philanthropy to is education. He's also been the one that's helped us start the online Great Books program and is very supportive in philanthropic measures from birth to, through the university level in education. So, we're super honored to have Joe Ricketts with us. As our graduation speaker, we hope all of you guys will be able to attend May 17th. We normally block off two days, so it'll be May 17th, May 18th, hoping that one of those two days will give us some great weather because we do it right on the, on the bayfront and it's beautiful. We continue to do massive, for those that are here, if you drive around, just continually to massively invest in the college, the university, and, and, and everything from our food service to lining up additional rooms for the growth. You know, right now, at this pace, it looks like we're going to be somewhere in that 800 to 900 students, just in two years. So, well on our way to shoot, well past the 1,200 that the Board of Governors and the legislature had asked us to attain in years past. So, the other good news is during the session, I know you know the numbers from the legislative session were good, they have not been signed yet by the governor. But all indications are with his support in the past and to date, that I think we're safe thus far from any kind of veto from the governor and thoroughly appreciate his tremendous support. He also helped in the legislature and our legislative delegation. We lost our license plate, which every university has a license plate. We successfully got that back this legislative session and we got it back in permanent, in a permanent fashion. So, we're also starting and sent out to the, to the campus body their thoughts on a new license plate, existing license plate, similar to the mission statement. And so, we'll get that put together and hopefully put together a license plate here in the next couple of months. The last thing I want to say is I've only been here for just over a year. I think it was end of February, if I remember right, February 20-something, when we had the trustee meeting that I came for. The, and during that time, I've had the honor to work for all of you and it's been a true pleasure. But I do want to note that one of our trustees is, this is her last scheduled meeting. And I do want to thank Grace for her input. Just to put a, an idea of Grace's impact in the state at her young age already, this morning, I wake up and I get a text and I called it, and it's a who's-who person out of Tallahassee. And I get a text and says, hey, I need to talk to you about Grace Keenan. And I looked and I was like, what the heck? How does this person know Grace Keenan? I mean, what is this about? And I call and she's vying for a very prestigious position. And this individual is extremely impressed and just wanted some more background information. Obviously, I gave you glowing remarks, Grace. But I think, you know, we say in our, we try to, we got this from one of our faculty members, one of our classics professors, where we quote Archimedes a lot, that give me a firm place to stand. And it's, there's multiple versions, but the one we use is give me a firm place to stand and I'll move the earth. And we like to say that we're hoping that, and it has been and will be, New College will be that firm place to stand and our students will move the earth. And if there's one graduate that I am obviously well aware of and know well, who is unquestionably going to move the earth in whatever ways, it's Trustee Keenan. And so, I just want to say thank you for your service.
Trustee Keenan will give you a few minutes at the end here to share whatever thoughts you have. We're running, we're actually running quite on time. We had a few less people actually come to the microphone to provide public comments. So, at this point, let's take a break and reconvene at three, please.
No one's paying attention to me. I'm on. Thank you, everybody. It's 3 o'clock. Break is over. Missing. Cristaldi, I need him back.
Yeah, I'd wait for him to come back.
Maybe.
Maybe not. No, actually, I don't think I do. Because it's... This is all other stuff.
Yeah.
So it wasn't... This thing ended with, um, this package. You want me to pull it up?
Okay.
Because it was in one of those things that they sent us.
There he is. I see him. Thank you. Do we have our Zoom people back on? Yeah, very sorry. Okay. Thank you. Everybody seems to enjoy the breaks. Okay. We're back on continuing the Board of Trustees' meeting. We are going to have a vote on the Presidential Evaluation Standing Committee's recommendation of approval of President Corcoran's annual incentive compensation. Before I turn the floor over to Trustee Vice Chair Cristaldi, who has worked very hard on this, I just want to let you know that in accordance with the Board of Governors' Regulation 1.001, I, as Chair of the Board of Trustees, requested input from Brian Lamb, the Chairman of the Board of Governors of the Florida State University System, regarding President Corcoran's performance and responsiveness to the Board of Governors' strategic goals and priorities and his compliance with system-wide regulations. Chair Lamb raised no negative issues and, in fact, advised that he... That President Corcoran has exceeded expectations for himself and the university. And the Board of Governors is very pleased with his performance at New College. At this time, I would like to recognize Trustee Vice Chair Cristaldi to walk through the documents before you today.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, for the record, I was not Chair of the Committee, but was asked to report on the actions of the Committee. And this is the Presidential Evaluation Standing Committee. The Committee evaluated the President on eight categories, which were benchmarks set out by this Board of Trustees for the President a year ago to accomplish. Those eight categories were increasing funding for New College, enhancing or increasing campus life, inclusive of improvements to student housing, food services, and adding sports, re-envisioning the campus master plan, increasing campus safety and security, adding faculty with an emphasis on growth and excellence, increasing employment... I'm sorry, increasing enrollment, growing to 1,200 students by the end of Year Five of the President's contract, enriching academic programs and offerings. And the eighth criteria was increasing second-year retention with the metric growing to 85% by the fifth year of President Corcoran's employment. And Madam Chair, the information in the packet goes through some detail. The Committee did discuss those in detail. And based on the information provided to the Committee in its discussion, the Presidential Evaluation Committee recommends to this Board to award the full contract incentive compensation to President Corcoran based on his performance and meeting those goals and objectives that were previously set by the Board. And so it would be appropriate, Madam Chair, to receive a motion that the Board of Trustees accept and approve that recommendation, which, again, is to award the full contractual incentive compensation to the President based on his performance and meeting the goals and objectives set by the Board.
Thank you. I'll treat that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Karp. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Trustee Reed.
Has anyone consulted with the Foundation about whether or not they have sufficient funds to pay this? I am concerned about the depletion of Foundation funds. We know that the divisions have been... Have needed to use a lot of Foundation funds this year in order to bring in all the candidates for interviews. We know that they're... They have not received budgets for this year from the administration, and so we're running on faith. We know that a number of receipts that are submitted to the Foundation are not paid in a prompt way. And so I just have concerns, and I'm wondering if anyone on the Committee checked with the Foundation about whether or not it is viable for them to pay this money.
We'll have General Counsel Galvano answer that, please.
Yes, I... That was an issue that had come up earlier. And so I confirmed that the Foundation does have the funds and has set these funds aside.
Thank you. Are there any... Yes, Trustee Spalding?
I just... I wanted to make the obvious comment here. The... President Corcoran has brought in $50 million in appropriations, the largest annual infusion of the financial resources in the school's history, more than colleges obtained in the total last 10 years. My assumption is that previous Presidents also received bonuses. This seems to be a bonus that was actually earned.
Thank you, Trustee Spalding. Any other questions or... Oh, is there... On the Zoom, anybody have any questions, comments? No? All right. Well, there's been a motion made and a second, and we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries. Thank you. At this point, I'm going to call Vice Provost... Vice Provost Brad Thiessen to the podium. We have two matters that he's going to address. The first is the approval of the classification of instructional programs or CIP code changes. And with that, Mr. Thiessen, you have the floor.
Thank you. And if you like administrative minutia, have I got the agenda item for you.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
Yeah.
You're tall, so you've got to raise the... Yeah, there you go.
I'll lean in.
Thank you.
So I'm... I'll give a summary of this to show you. Ultimately, we're not doing much, but it is important. But it takes a little bit of time to explain what's going on.
Perfect.
So SIP codes, classification of instructional programs. They're six-digit numbers that are used to categorize academic programs. So a math program has a specific number, a history program, and so on. There's thousands of these numbers. New College offers 50 academic programs, right, areas of concentration? However, we classify those 50 programs into only six SIP codes. All right, so we have six. One example is, we include biology, math, computer science, physics, statistics, and other programs under one SIP code called Biological and Physical Sciences. All right, so historically, there are reasons why we did that, but that's where we are right now. The problems this causes, or this has caused, is... First is the visibility of our programs. If you go to an external website, like the College Scorecard or the Board of Governors' website, and look up the number of academic programs we offer, or what academic programs we offer, you'll only see five or six listed. So a student looking for psychology on a site won't find psychology. They'll find we do liberal arts and five other programs. A student looking for physics won't find physics. They'll find our six SIP codes. So that's a problem. The other more immediate problem is the Board of Governors has a performance-based funding metric, so funding is tied to it, on the percent of degrees we award in programs of strategic importance, emphasis to the state of Florida. So every time we award a degree in the correct SIP code, we get credit towards future funding. They've made a modification to that list, so none of our current six SIP codes will count as these programs of strategic emphasis. So if we do nothing, starting next year, the degrees we award, we will lose performance-based funding, and it will be an implication that we offer no degree of strategic importance to the state of Florida. And we know we do, right? Our liberal arts degree is important. So what we have in front of you right now is, believe it or not, a streamlined process. We worked with BOG staff. We cut down the process and the red tape to get this approved. You have 30 forms in front of you. And all they are doing is taking our 50 academic programs and more appropriately classifying them into the SIP codes that they should be classified under. These, if approved by the Board of Trustees, will then be reviewed by the Council of Academic Vice Presidents Academic Coordinating Group. Go back to BOG staff for a final review. Again, you can look through these. I don't think there's anything controversial here. There's no changes to curriculum, no changes to resources, no changes to staffing, no changes to program names. Nothing that anyone will notice, except the Board of Governors and people going to external sites, will now see we offer 50 academic programs. So that's what's in front of you. I recommend you approve it, so we can get future performance-based funding and classify our programs appropriately.
Thank you. Stay there. Don't move.
But if I may add, you guys might recall back in... I want to say it was October or November. I sent out to all of you the initial memorandum that the Vice Provost had written that we sent up to the Board of Governors, hoping that it's so technical in nature that they could just do it without having to go through this process. But they've asked us to go through this process, hence we're back. But it was so technical in nature, we were saying, "It seems like a very laborious process just to say that this SIP code..." Math is no longer math. I mean, just give us... Continue to give us the credit for the courses that you're giving to now. But just... And I just want to thank Vice Provost Thiessen. He... It was his brilliant idea. We didn't succeed to just try to get the BOG just to okay it. He found some loopholes, but they weren't buying. So now we're here.
This looks like it was a lot of work. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the classification of instructional program SIP code changes? Thank you, Trustee Reed. Is there a second? Matthew Spalding, Trustee Spalding, thank you. Any discussion? Questions, comments? No?
Like a no-brainer.
Thank you. It actually, from my read, looks a lot better than the prior six. So let's take a vote on this. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? No opposed? Okay, motion carries. You're still up there. You're seeking the... We're seeking the approval of the 2024 Accountability Plan, and I would ask Vice Provost Brad Thiessen to discuss the Accountability Plan.
This is an annual requirement. This is the data that is used for our performance-based funding. It also includes, in this Accountability Plan, our strategy for the short term, one to three years, priorities, enrollment goals, and so on. Not in this Accountability Plan, but based on the data inside of it, we know that our performance-based funding score for next year will earn us full funding. So that's the good news in this report. And since I brought it up, what do we have to thank for that? The biggest improvements on metrics we had were on the employment-based metrics. So our career services, our CEO office, our students' median income, and the percent of students with immediate employment really jumped up high this year. We're finally seeing the results of all the efforts of that office and our faculty to integrate career prep into the curriculum. So the rest of it is what's in the Accountability Plan. We didn't change many goals. We increased the goals for those employment metrics going forward. We did decrease our goal in that metric about programs of strategic emphasis, because we are losing some of those. And that's pretty much it. The rest, the goals are pretty much what they were last year.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the 2024 Accountability Plan?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Trustee Karp, is there a second? Trustee Cristaldi, any discussion? No discussion, no questions? Okay. Let's do a vote, please. All those in favor of the 2024 Accountability Plan? Approval, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? No opposed? Okay, motion carries. We've completed the business for today. Is there... Is there... I don't see any new business, so... Oh, Trustee Reed.
I just, at the end of this meeting, I'd like to recognize one of my colleagues, Dr. Gerardo Toro Farmer, who is present with us today and who just received tenure from this Board. I want to note that the real strength of Dr. Toro Farmer's file is collaboration, building collaborations for research, notably with NASA, involving students in hands-on research in both marine and freshwater environments, notably collecting data on the seagrass beds in Sarasota Bay. He has several publications with students as co-authors. This, as noted already, high-impact practice reflects significant investment of time on his part, but it contributes significantly to our metrics and has a real impact on our students for their retention, for their persistence in advanced study. He has also developed and leads the GIS certificate program on campus, which also involves students in hands-on research. He has been involved in multiple service projects here on campus, serving on the International Studies Committee and helping to develop the Ideas Grant, which was ultimately successful to support study abroad. He offers LAC classes and CYC classes, which were a real contribution to our general studies curriculum. And he has given presentations and tours to multiple constituencies, from prospective students to Congressman Vern Buchanan. His outside reviewers emphasize the impact of his research, the high number of his citations, over 700 in Google Scholar, and the placement of articles in good journals. Reviewers also emphasize the long arc of his career, emphasizing that the development of projects and publications since his postdoc at USF is important, because tenure is not just a snapshot. I invite you all to congratulate Dr. Toro Farmer.
Thank you, Trustee Reed. Congratulations to those who received tenure. At this point, seeing no new business, I'm taking the Chair's prerogative to thank...
I just wanted to publicly congratulate all the people, in addition, you know, once again, who received tenure this year. It's quite an accomplishment. We're looking forward, as trustees, to watching you grow and continue to elevate the university here. And we're very excited to work with you going forward. Also, to Trustee Keenan echoing President Corcoran's comments, we've enjoyed working with you throughout the past and wish you well in the future.
And now, Chair's prerogative to thank Trustee Keenan for her service. I think you were here before many of us got here. I know you've carried a load of studies, and you're going to graduate. Congratulations. That's great. I believe you came in as a transfer student, yes?
Yeah.
So you help our numbers. That's awesome. And, you know, we all wish you the best of luck. You had asked me if you could have a couple minutes at the end of the meeting, and unless Trustee Cristaldi had something he wanted to say first?
Yeah, if I could.
Yeah.
Trustee Keenan, I just, not to pile on, but... And not to take anything away from the two prior student representatives on the Board that I had the pleasure of serving with, and I'm sure the successor to Trustee Keenan will be fantastic as well. But I wanted to say, kind of emphatically, that the past year has been one of challenges, the past year and a half. And I couldn't have imagined a better student representative on this Board of Trustees in the face of adversity, in the face of controversy, I'm sure with counsel of people to act crass and resist in ways that are unbecoming of a New College student. Trustee Keenan is one who rejected that and instead chose the path of being an influencer, chose the path of being poised, mature, smart, hardworking, and I am sure will accomplish great things in her life beyond New College here. But we will all definitely miss you, Trustee Keenan, and we've all had a real pleasure of having served with you.
And I would just...
Here, here, wholeheartedly.
I would just add that Trustee Keenan went up at least a year ago for New College Days before the legislature, where we went and asked for money. And she's attended the SO... SUS, State University System, Board of Governors' meetings, has come up and taken time out of her school studies to do that. So we thank you, Trustee Keenan, and now the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comments. I greatly appreciate it. I've served in this role for two years, and I'm very happy to pass the torch to our President-elect, Olivia Mickelson, and Vice President Kyla Baldonado over here. In my four years here, we have had four Presidents of the College. As I told you when I first met you, I have had many praises and many criticisms of each of them, especially Brad. Just kidding. I will support my college through whatever President we have, because I will be supporting my college for a very long time. Because what we do here, how this place changes you, is so much more important than myself, than the President, this Board, or the current politics of the state. I have had the opportunity to work with you all and see the behind-the-scenes of how this administration works, and I'm not exactly happy exactly of how it's going. For all our talk of virtue and civil discourse, the public continues to see us not practice what we preach. But I do not want to discourage anyone here. But I do not want to discourage anyone here. I want you to live up to these principles, and I think everyone in this room is capable of them. There are many places where we can find common ground, our excellent academic system being one of them. And we can also agree that there are many people dissatisfied with higher education in general right now. I think you all are raising important questions. But if anyone is going to find the answer to them, I think it's the people who have been through the New College system. You are not and cannot do it on your own. Unfortunately, we have burned so many bridges and we have not built many back. My advice to this Board is that you make it a priority to build back trust and build some credibility. Leadership and the rest of the College cannot function as two separate entities fighting each other. Someone has to step up and fix that divide. It will make all of our lives a lot more enjoyable and these Board meetings shorter, hopefully. Finally, I hope that our leadership, the faculty, the students, the alumni, and the community members that care so much about New College don't give up on our school. It is a blend of pleasure to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, there being no further business to come before this Board without objection, the Board meeting is adjourned. Thank you.